My adversity sometimes they were short.
People.
I've been playing for a while.
No, he's just he's pretty athletic, so he picked it up pretty quick. And my job replaced.
You don't play a bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I started.
I was like, what do you think? I think I can do it.
Good?
Yeah. This is how it says that.
I'm not gonna say nothing.
Right here, I think that's why. So, on your floor.
I know what he's doing.
Right, well. Cause I'm more of a boy.
For no reason.
We're so girls. So. We're lucky.
How good?
I was gonna say, I haven't taped that one down, so.
Yeah, I just have all your chair. I don't know if you're against.
I think. I want to go ahead and conduct a special discussion today. I wish I was interested.
What actually like recently.
I think. Trying to make sense of existence and it's like.
Yeah, it's all mixed up, right?
Yeah.
Money.
There was.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Where'd you go?
Right, right.
What about yours? Oh, the red carpet turned on strong.
I just. Yeah.
You know, now we're sad.
That's true. Yeah, you all should have it just. Yeah.
So, yeah, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
You're well, thank you.
How are you, Toby?
I'm all right. We're strapping myself in.
Yeah.
Yeah. The G force. You're in a different space, but. I have a question too.
How are you doing? Get good, hello? Uh, I guess.
I never know where everybody is. Do you feel comfortable with using the? Yeah, the taste. I have a hard copy right there.
For the platform, I was gonna talk about it. Okay, I'm finding it more candid out.
I mean, we don't have to, you can talk.
No, I was just gonna say that there are no whole website.
Oh, okay.
On the process website.
Do you want? Well, I have tried identifying them.
To be finalized, right? Those are where they're at, or are they already found?
Nah. I have no idea. I tried to get information, but I couldn't. And a micro survey, is there only anything else?
All right, I think these are submitted to the November sixth vote.
They may be.
Yeah. All right, so you wanna talk about them?
Yeah, I was gonna cover it. I mean, I was gonna talk about.
The ball?
The specifics. I was just hoping they were available.
Oh, okay.
They're available. We can talk about specifics.
I just wanted to highlight the specifics, cause I think the first.
But I'm willing to help them.
Yeah, well, I mean, I have a pretty good plan. Yeah. Whatever. Yeah.
Yes.
She has. She's. So, you can get up with it.
Correct, take your water.
I'm hoping had it.
Hello. My.
Honestly, why?
I have this audio. I'm checking. Joe and.
Oh, my goodness. Toby, huh? Okay.
Doing all right.
He is, look at him. He's retired commissioner.
I got a lot of squall. Such as they do.
Thank you, you look.
Light.
You look incredible.
So rested.
You look so different.
So tanned, right?
Tan.
Looks like a movie star.
No, I just finished my shift. It's sad.
It is a minute to go.
Uh, his is not. His will go on. Okay, bye.
All right, it's six o'clock. Brief announcements before we start the meeting. For those watching tonight's meeting via Diligent Community, the meeting is available livestream via the Diligent Community platform. Please note, the chat feature is not monitored. Public comment is accepted in person. The link to the video will be posted on the Diligent Community website immediately following this evening's meeting. To improve the sound while listening to the meeting, please turn up the volume on your computer and turn up the volume on the Diligent Community site. The meeting packet for tonight's meeting is located on the Diligent Community site itself. For those attending tonight's meeting, the bathrooms are located in the foyer through the double doors. There are two emergency exits from the room, the door behind you and the room through the foyer. If you haven't already, please sign the white attendance sheet on the podium in the back of the meeting room. As a reminder, this is a business meeting and the board asks for your cooperation to maintain proper decor. Please be considerate and refrain from interrupting board members and other speakers. To improve the quality of sound, there is a boom microphone directed toward the commissioners. The microphone likely will be, will likely pick up additional audience noise and sidebar conversations. So, I'd like to call to order via roll call. Tonight's meeting on October fifth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole meeting. Denise, would you execute the roll call?
Commissioner Hemmings?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Raff?
Here.
Commissioner Ruth?
Present.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Commissioner Lessen?
Here.
Commissioner Coto?
Here.
You have a forum?
Thanks, Denise. Second item is additions or changes to the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda itself? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, remarks from visitors. As a reminder, remarks from visitors is your opportunity to address the board on any issue. When called upon, come to the center position at the podium in front of the commissioners. Speak loudly, state your name for the record and speak directly to the board. Keep all comments under three minutes. As you all know, this is not a question and answer forum, so please do not expect a response or answer from the park board this evening. If you prefer to share your comments and writing, you may use the comment cards, which are available near the sign-in sheets. Any park district staff will accept your card to be shared with the board. With that, we'll start with the back row. Any remarks from visitors?
Back row?
I'd like to mix it up, Ted.
Oh, I didn't want to do it. I had to say it first. Doesn't matter.
Hello, Ted Winachanko. So, um, this whole issue of payment, I'm gonna stop using the word donation, cause that implies charitable and unrestricted grants. So, this is be a payment to the park district. I'm really confused about this. So, I was thinking about this, right? If I was selling my house, right? And I had a deal with somebody and I offered a head tug, blah, blah, blah. And, and then we were kind of this like period where we weren't sure. I don't see why I would then go out and spend, you know, fifty thousand dollars re-landscaping my yard, right? Because like I could not have that house if the deal goes through. And so, I am really confused by this board's position. On the one hand, we're, you're saying, we need to spend millions of that of taxpayer dollars to fix up a property that on the other hand, we're saying, we don't even know if we're gonna keep it. In fact, we have a contract to dispose of it. It makes no sense, right? It's illogical. You need to be consistent. You are spending taxpayer dollars, public land, some land held in trust. It needs to be consistent. If you're gonna fix it up, then you need to first say, we're not gonna get rid of it. Okay? Because it makes no sense for you to spend my tax dollars and be certain. A payment from a particular individual to offset the cost of that project doesn't mean it isn't my tax dollars, because my tax dollars are then being used in other ways, so it's still my tax dollars. So, if you're gonna fix it up, then first say, deal's done. Get a confirmation, deal's done, that that land's gonna stay to the park districts. If you're not gonna do that, then until that is done, we shouldn't be spending a penny of my tax dollars or any donation that we get. Now, if someone wants to make a payment and kind of avoid issues in the tax code, because, you know, owning a professional sports team isn't tax lucrative enough, then they can try to do that, but we shouldn't be complicit in it. Okay? So, that's my opinion again. It's not a donation. It really shouldn't be, nothing should be done until the, the idea of long-term ownership of that parcel of land is finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Uh, how about from the third row? Any public comments, public remarks? Susie?
Yeah. Good evening. Susie Schreiber, Wanneta Park District resident, former commissioner. And as you know, I generally try to frame things around policy and procedure as it affects everybody and as it respects your fiduciary responsibility to all of the residents of the Wanneta Park District. And there are three points that I would like to cover tonight, very, very briefly. One is we've just had a very big caucus survey and there was a great deal of effort on behalf of the caucus and other community groups to get really good responses to this year's caucus survey, as we had last year. And it just came out and people have been out of town and they're coming back in for. And they need time to have a chance to look at it. I know I looked at it and the font was so small on the Papal computer that I was using that it was really hard to even decipher every third word. And it wasn't that the survey or the voice, it was just on what I could see it. So, I, what I'm really basically saying is that before, you had topics under discussion tonight, but there is no rush, whether these are, these could be handled in November or December and you would still be on your timeline. But I really hope that you give people a chance to look at the caucus survey, get back to you on their feelings and that you all have the chance to carefully look at the significance of the responses and the percentages and where they're coming from. That being said, it drew me many times, say, on ADA that a great deal need, more needs to be done at some at Elder, but definitely at Centennial for your present concept of the ADA, um, infrastructure that you're putting in. I truly, in my continual discussions with members, including in my own family of the ADA community, there are missing items and they could be very, very helpful and they would actually reduce the cost considerably of that feature of your long-term plan. I'd be very willing to help you put together that kind of input if you would be interested. And then I echo those who were, have great concern and I'm speaking on behalf of former commissioners who were not present tonight or who have not been present during the discussions, but have shared their own opinions on the naming. Naming historically, um, of our parks has been a very sensitive topic and we have spent over a year sometimes making a decision. We've also had certain individuals within the Wanneta Park District and who've lived here for a long time, who have had intent of having a park named for someone close to them. And we listened and listened, in some cases, two and a half years and we didn't do it. We said, no. Um, in this case, Station Park is Station Park, or if you wanna name it Founder's Park for all of the people who contributed, fine. But it is not, um, it's a very sensitive issue. So, I hope that you would all tonight take this into consideration and even have discussions, but maybe not vote. Thank you very much. If you look on the discussions.
Thank you, Susie. Uh, we're still in the third row. Any other public comments or remarks from visitors? None? Seeing none. Uh, second row, any remarks from visitors? First row? Seeing none. We will move on to item four, communications.
Uh, yeah.
Can you see?
So, there are a number of articles that are in your meeting packet, uh, mostly around the proposed donation. Uh, there's also a, an article regarding the, um, celebration event with the Wanneta Women's Club. And then finally, there are, um, comment cards that Commissioner Ruth and Commissioner Coto gathered from the Wanneta Farmers Market on September thirtieth.
Thank you. Uh, item five on the agenda, new business, five point one, the twenty twenty-four budget, long-range plan and capital expenditure presentation. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you. Then Costa and I are gonna make this presentation here this evening, but I want to point out that this is a collaborative process. And I wanna thank the business unit leaders, the other staff members and administrative assistants who have helped put this together to get us to this point so far. I also wanna thank the commissioners I've met with, who have given me some very solid feedback and some constructive criticism on the presentation itself. Thank you all for taking the time to help us fine tune this, this instrument here. Uh, Toby, if you would move to slide two, please. This is the status of our alternate, alternate revenue bond sources and uses. It starts with twenty twenty, where we issued the bonds and what we've used the bonds for each year up to this point. You will see that we are projecting at the end of twenty twenty-three, uh, the right-hand side of the page. We expect to have seven million, four hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars left in the bond fund for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are projecting to earn approximately a hundred eighty thousand dollars in interest, uh, interest-bearing, uh, accounts where the bond money is held. And we are projecting to spend approximately two point five million dollars on the Elder Centennial Shoreline in twenty twenty-four, leaving a balance of little over five million, one hundred twelve thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars in our bond fund at the end of twenty twenty-four. Moving on to slide three, Toby, if you would, please, thank you. This is the status of our operating fund reserves. The column on the far left is what was budgeted for twenty twenty-three. The middle column is our year-end estimate for twenty twenty-three. In that column, you will see some numbers are highlighted in red. Those are our unrestricted reserves, money that is not targeted for a specific purpose. From those unrestricted reserves, we are required to withhold twenty-five percent of our operating expense budget in each fund for, for safety purposes. It's a park district policy, we're required to do so. The numbers you are gonna see in gold after that withholding number are what's available. Available reserves at the end of twenty twenty-three, we are projecting ten million, four hundred twenty-six thousand, twenty-two dollars. Those are reserves that we can use for fund-specific items or in the case of the general fund or the recreation fund, we can transfer some of that money to the capital funds if we need to. Let me slide four, please. This is the summary of our major and operating capitals for this year and for our twenty twenty-four request. For twenty twenty-three, we budgeted a total capital expenditure of eleven million, two hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred two dollars. A bunch of that did not take place. We did not do the Elder Centennial work that we planned for twenty twenty-three. So, our year-end estimate for spending for all capital projects is two million, eight hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred sixty-four. Add to the operating capitals of four hundred ninety-nine thousand, we're expecting a grand total expenditure of three, three, one eight, one seventy-five. Our twenty twenty-four request for all operating capitals and major capitals comes to a total of four million, four hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars. And then you will see projected capital expenditures from twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight on the right-hand side of the page. At this point, I'm gonna turn this over to Costa Katulis, who's gonna go through the specific details of these cap requests.
Thank you. Toby, if you'd like to advance to, thank you. Uh, first is the general fund account. This account is the two hundred corporate account that takes care of a lot of the IT software for the park district administration building. You'll see some of the expenses through there. I'm not gonna go through every line item on this, we'll be here all night. So, I'm just gonna hit the twenty-four expected expenditures of where we budgeted. If there's questions as it relates to closeout for twenty-three or future expenditures for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight, please let me know. Please note, as the years progress, twenty-five through twenty-eight, those numbers get shored up the closer they are to the date of actual operation. So, as we move forward for our planning for budget for twenty twenty-four, we of course get price quotes and as much information as we can to get those numbers firmed up as tight as we can for that year. But as we move forward and we get out further, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, those are best guessed estimates at this point in time based on expertise of staff and our knowledge of the industry. So, just be aware that those are more estimates as the further you get out. Uh, general funds for two thousand, we are projecting twenty-one thousand, five hundred, um, some system management server replacements and switches that basically, once again, take care of the operations for the entire IT system, for the entire park district. As we move on to the three hundred account, the three hundred garage account serves both the golf service center, which is the service center for applied service for not only the golf operations, but also operations throughout the entire agency, as well as the park service center, once again, the two garages, if you will. Funds expected for this year, uh, for upcoming twenty twenty-four, we're looking to replace the fuel pumps that were deferred and our cathodic protection. Those are systems in place to operate our underground storage tanks for our fuel. In the park service center, we're looking to, uh, finally complete the painting for the facility that was deferred due to the construction for the stormwater project and then parking lot paving, uh, as well as identified. As we move into the four hundred account, you'll see in the parks account, we are looking to complete paving that was deferred for the Green Bay Trail. Uh, half road, we have some work there, we have a playground update, uh, which we're looking to reinvest into that playground structure, some color coding for the basketball courts there. Moving on to Indian Hill Road Park, we have a roof to be completed there. Northfield Park, we deferred some maintenance on the color coding for the basketball, basketball court that we're gonna bring into twenty twenty-four. And then at West Elm Park, we have some site furnishings. The last major expense and the majority of the work, uh, that's gonna be expended in capitals for four hundred relates to equipment. There were two trucks that were ordered in twenty twenty-three. Unfortunately, due to supply chain issues and, uh, issues around that, those trucks have been, are delayed and we've deferred those expenses into twenty twenty-four. Please note that the amounts that were budgeted originally per the board and was approved, these amounts are higher because that takes in consideration the trade-in allowance of seventy-five hundred dollars per vehicle. We put in the full amount, not knowing what we would yield for a trade-in with the, you know, another winter on their belt, because they are both haul trucks, that fee can come down, but we are looking to recoup some cost back for trade-in value of those two vehicles. So, just be aware of that. And then the other two vehicles, once again, two thousand and eleven trucks, both of those trucks are used, uh, vehicles throughout the parks fleet. Uh, one is for our Parks Operations Manager, that truck has over a hundred thousand miles on it. And our number ten is for our mowing crew, which, um, is out every day amongst the parks. So, the total capitals for the four hundred account anticipated for twenty twenty-four is five hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars. As we move on to the recreation capital funds, twenty twenty-four expenditures, you'll see a common theme through four different accounts of seal coding for ten thousand dollars. That is to seal code the entire Skokie Playfield complex. Seal coding and restriping for that complex. We've deferred a little bit, we've tried a couple of different avenues, but that's what that expense is for. You'll see it between ice, golf, tennis and administration, our rec, uh, funds here. The other, um, that's it for twenty twenty-four, excuse me. Uh, the twenty, or, um, the eleven hundred capital fund recreation programming, there's no capitals program in twenty twenty-four, but we are looking to replace the stage that has been put on order. As we move on to slide eleven, recreation fund capitals, twelve hundred, we have irrigation systems in there for a hundred thousand dollars. That breakdown is once again for the two systems that we talked about implementing this year for Nick Corin Playground, as well as the Little Duke Fields. Did get pricing back actually this morning, that price is gonna come down ever so slightly, but we are looking to expense those report for those, uh, irrigation systems, give that work better, better work product for the Nick Corin Fields. And there's an opportunity to work with the ASYO soccer program on that for possible donation or, you know, increase fees for services. That would be a decision that we'll have the recreation make, once they, um, understand that, that philosophy and the best way to, uh, take advantage of that. Moving on to the fourteen hundred account, there, uh, there's one expenditure noted for next year, which is two sailboats. That number was put in as a placeholder until everything was finalized with the programming and everything is solidified with the sailing program. If there was a need or want to bring that back in-house, that fee was included to replace the other vessels. Based on the conversation as of late and as we further those, that might not be expensed in twenty twenty-four or in future until that program comes back under house, uh, the roof, if you will. And then I know there's questions around the vessels beyond. Once again, those are safety vessels for that programming. Items are in there as placeholders. The cost per unit is about seventy-five hundred, they're small, um, little Avon vessels. Once again, just for the boat and a small nine horsepower outboard. As we move on to recreation capitals, fifteen hundred, uh, the beaches, site, or Tower Road, we have ejector pumps in there for ten thousand, painting in there for seventeen thousand and then repavement of the upper parking lot for seventy thousand dollars. The ejector pumps, you'll see a common theme, uh, unfortunately through a few of the line items. We budget these items as we expect them to go, you know, run their end of life, end of service life, but if we, if we can maintain them and as we get more life expectancy out of them, we defer that payment as needed. So, sometimes you'll see a running total where you'll see multiple items budgeted year to year. That's the expenditure. Since we did not have to replace them, we did not, you know, execute on that. But we don't wanna be foolish to the point where we don't budget for it and then we have a ten thousand dollar expense that we're coming back to the board with as well. So, we just wanna make sure that we're keeping that on the docket. Moving on to Maple, parking lot repavement there, looking to get that completed. And then moving on to Elder, you'll notice two things there. Once again, ejector pumps for the sewage for the facility and then playground update. As it was discussed with the park board and as we look to, um, instruct the Elder Centennial project, you know, when that gets approved or if that gets approved, the playground renovation would coincide with that work. The renovation cost is estimated at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of the size of the playground and the use zone of what we are looking to do at that, at that site. Taking the sand away, putting fire bar in and trying to make that more accessible. The cost for that playground is noted at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The breakdown of what would be expended in twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-five is noted and split in half right now. Looking to do the demolition and securing of the playground equipment in-house in twenty twenty-four and then in twenty twenty-five, look for the installation of the units. So, that's the breakdown for that. So, if there's any questions on that, I just want to kinda answer those ahead of time. And then there's no equipment for the fifteen hundred account, so the total capitals for the recreation fund would be three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. As we move on to the recreation fund for the bowl launch, currently there's six thousand dollars slated to brush door, basically change out the lighting on the facility, move away from the sodium fixtures and move to LED lighting and get some, uh, better lighting down there at the facility, that's indicated in there for six thousand dollars. Moving on to the two thousand account, two thousand account is for the golf course clubhouse. These numbers were reviewed and worked up alongside Kemper Sports, Vince, Matt, uh, Matt Johnson and Andrew Dartner, along with Jim, John and myself, reviewed these numbers with Vince and these are the capital expenditures. There is a HVAC replacement for the pro room furnace slated in twenty twenty-four. And when we look to some of the other capitals, once again, that seal coding number as we talked about for the facility being shared. Some appliances for kitchen equipment, twenty thousand dollars is noted there. Once again, bringing the vendor in in twenty twenty-four as we ramp up for the opening late twenty twenty-four. You'll see also ball dispenser replacement of that for the dragon range, cart bar roof, roof for forty thousand dollars, as well as a sixty thousand dollar infrastructure upgrade for the electric, to provide the electric service to the golf, golf cart, uh, facility as we are anticipating the switchover of that fleet. Please be aware, you'll notice that in twenty twenty-six, there is an expenditure of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to include a sprinkler system. a sprinkler system. Currently, after discussions with the Fire Chief, John Rupka, and talking through Randy Fromm, one of their inspectors, currently it is not stated that it's a requirement. They would love to see that facility be sprinkled due to the revenues and the downturn in 2024 and what we're expecting of another year where there'd be a subsidy there. As we grow that revenue and we start to get back in the black, if you will, in 2025 and beyond, that's when we earmark that to go out. So that is a future improvement, but we're going to look to the village and suggest that we do want to make the improvement, but we'll make it in a short time cycle. So just be aware. Total golf course capitals for the clubhouse is going to be $152,500 for the 2024 season. As we move into the golf course maintenance capitals for the 2100, or fencing for the clubhouse has been noted for $45,000. That is not fencing as it relates to construction, but that is the fencing that you see that separates the parking lot from the par three course. That strands basically from where the five, number five green was before by the ice facility, the ice arena, and goes all the way to the number one tee by the par three clubhouse. That's looking to be replaced. That is in disrepair and is part of the construction. We deferred that until next year in the spring. We are looking to re-carpet this year at the 18th and 14th tee, and then we have the number two bridge in here for replacement as well. Because of the design of the bridge, we decided to hold off on that and put that in in a second tier effort. That instruct or the installation of that will have no effect on the construction that took place already and can be done without impacting the construction by needs. And then the last piece on here is $40,000 for tee signs that are indicated on this page. The tee signs, of course, with the change in layout and the anticipated routing with the new systems for the golf course fleet, the rental carts will be able to transition to a more aesthetically pleasing and less busy sign, as noted. When we look to equipment, there's two items that Andrew has requested. One is the replacement of a 2005 John Deere mower. That is a bank mower that is utilized for cutting along the bunkers around the greens where there's a lot of undulations and movement of the soils to be able to get the proper contours or even on skelping. So that item has been identified as a $48,000 replacement and a lily spreader to replace our current unit that is definitely seeing some better days. The total expense for that is $302,000 for the 2024 year. As we move into Platform Tennis Fund Capitals, right now the only capital in there for 2024 is noted for the deck and railing replacements. So the deck that's being noted in here for $140,000 is the current composite decking that you see that surrounds the facility itself and leads you to the courts one through eight or one through six around the site. Unfortunately, due to the current condition and the amount of salt that we have to do to make, put down to maintain that facility in the winter time, the, all the brackets, choice holders and everything else have deteriorated over time. We have had made several emergency repairs out there, reshoring up the timber bracing and all the infrastructure underneath. Come to a point in time where we're looking to replace that with an aluminum, extruded aluminum decking similar to the court's design where we can put heaters under there. Once again, to keep that, keep it flowing, keep it more cleaner and less ice and reduction there for the participants, and it's going to be an easier move to maintain as well as get better curb appeal. We understand that the future development of phase two for that facility with the original donation and the future potential donation to expand the facility itself is still there. Work being done would have to change a little bit on the front side, but those deck panels could be repurposed and reused in order for the new layout configuration. So it wouldn't necessarily be a waste to be double-handedly maneuver material. That expenditure we're anticipating to be $140,000 as we price it out through the platform association or the platform contractor that we use to build the courts. As we move into the indoor tennis fund, the 2400 account, 24 expenditures right now is $17,000. You might note in there that in 2023, we did budget $45,000. After talking with Pat, we're looking to bring this in in more of a step stage, taking a look at a shade structure near the outdoor courts by Court 12, just to the north of the current tennis shaft. So that's identified in two steps. Phase one would be to put the concrete in, in the infrastructure for that, and then in 2025, include the shade structure on top of that. So you're seeing that breakdown over the course of the next two years. But the total expenditure for 2024 is estimated, budgeted at $17,000. As we move on to the indoor tennis fund, 2500, currently right now, the only cost that we have incurred is some flooring, essentially some carpet replacements. We utilize the budget that we had this year to take care of some of the costs and expense that we incurred unfortunately due to the sanitary issue that has been corrected and that's all been changed out, but we still need to address the original issue for the carpeting. So we do have the carpeting number back in there for 2024. So right now, we're looking at a $5,000 expenditure for 2024. As we move on to the ice arena fund capitals, there's a few in there. Once again, we'll see that reoccurring seal coat number for the four different facilities that are going to share that. There's a sound system replacement in there for $75,000. That is the, that's what makes the ice show the ice show, and that's something that needs to be updated. Bathrooms, there's a little facelift for the two restrooms up front, as well as a floor scrubber that need to be replaced. The total expenditure, anticipated capitals for the 2700 account is $112,000. As we move on to special recreation, this one is a little bit more unique. This is our opportunity to utilize the special recreation fund for capitals to recoup dollars towards larger capitals. So if we do improvements in the parks and take things from non-ADA and make them ADA, there's opportunity to offset that additional cost out of funds from this fund. This is something that Jim and I have been talking about at length, and as we develop our site plans for our future plans for Elder Centennial and when those turn into construction documents that we can start putting cost towards, this is something that we'll look to up and take an increase in 2025 since the bulk of that project will be constructed in 2025. But right now, we did earmark a $60,000 number as a placeholder for now, and we'll adjust that number accordingly. But once again, this is our ability to recoup and spend dollars towards ADA improvements out of the special recreation fund account. The account itself also contributes to our cost for NSSRA and programming for there. And the last, but not least, Major Capitals 3700 account. The closeout for 2023, the budget, as Jim mentioned before, with all the major capitals was $9.5 million and change. Where we're closing out for major capitals, less operating, is $2,818,664.42. As we move into 2024, we had earmarked 2.5 million in 2024. The costs for this breakdown break down to the engineering services as contracted through Red Barn Engineering and the Lakota Group, along with the subconsultants that are make up those firms. The fee structure for that, Matt Rice contract of what would take us through the initial permitting phase, our estimated closeout for that in the 2024 year would be, or excuse me, I apologize. I wanted to finish out the expenditure in 2023. I jumped into 24, so I apologize, everybody. Let's take a look here at the 2023 estimate. The golf course improvements for the stormwater project of where things were closed out was That number was the additional change orders that were approved through the park board. And then you'll see the cart path improvements for $1,732,382.38, or once again, the base contract plus the improvements for the undercuts and the geofather, things related to the cart paths. The Elder Lane Centennial Beach House, we're anticipating that closeout to be roughly about $480,000, and that is the closeout of the phase one, I'm not going to say phase one, but the soft costs related towards the design work and the permitting fees if we move to permitting and closeout as we estimate to per our schedule in 2023. So that's where our cost came in for the estimate of the $2.8 million in 2023. Now, as we move to 2024, sorry for the confusion, the $2.5 million earmarked has soft costs. The remainder of the Red Barn contract of $447,900 and the remainder of the Lakota Group's contract with their subconsultants of $184,625 brings the remainder of the $2.5 down to $1,867,475 that would be put towards the initial construction if approved for Elder Centennial. Talking with Matt and reviewing the cost estimates, the $1.8 million and change identified in 2024 should cover the work that would be completed that calendar year. So we've identified that as the work that would be closed out prior to the end of the year for 2024 with the remainder of the work, the, you know, well, 85, 80, 80 to 85% of the work being closed out in 2025. We have an $11 million earmarked. There is a $15,000 fee in there that we included for surveys post-construction that we'll need to complete. So right now, the anticipated cost for closeout of that would be the $10,985,000. Now, what I will suggest is the anticipated cost is based off of the engineering estimates. The review that we believe the cost estimates will come in below where they are at, once again, an engineering review versus the, you know, the competitive bidding market and the bids that we receive, we'll know the actual hard costs as they come in in 2024 and we'll be able to adjust 2025 budget accordingly. The last piece I will note that the cost that are included in here is based on the staff recommendation to move forward with phase two work in its entirety with a single mobilization. That is an assumption that is being made for now, and once we get forward direction and final authorization to move forward, we'll adjust that accordingly. But the assumptions that are being made as part of the major capitals in the budget right now, based on staff's interpretation on where things are headed, is for phase two implementation in its entirety. The costs associated with '24 and the fee structure in '24 stay the same, phase one or phase two. Phase one or phase two, and when we get to 2025, as I suggested, those numbers will be adjusted based on the actual bids that come in of real-world cost, and we'll be able to have an understanding of where things are at with the decision made by the park board and of course, the authorization to move forward. That takes us through the capitals. Is there any questions for Jim or I that we can answer?
Any questions from commissioners?
Thank you.
Commissioner James? General Fund, 0200, I think you need to zero out the future years. This shows additional spending with no detail of. Oh, sorry. It's. Future years show $21,500. It should be zeros.
It has been updated. The sheet's in the refrigerator, the packet was not updated yet.
Okay. I'm just looking at what's on the screen.
Sure.
All right. What's a VTRU?
The VTRU system is a secondary system that we use for our fuel system. So for our underground storage tanks, we have to monitor our fuel levels, and that's the system that there's anodes and levels in the tanks, and that monitors that.
Okay. Just $40,000 replaces?
No, no, no. The VTRU system on Slide 6, the cost for that is $5,000.
Excuse me. $40,000 for the barber surf cone?
The HVAC barber surf cone should be on Slide for Orks 15 and 1600. I think that was expensed in the slide number 13, excuse me, Slide 14. The HVAC barber surf cone is a piece of equipment that is the tractor drawn unit that we pull behind our tractor to clean the sand. So once again, trying to coincide with the years of service that it's been, we've had that unit now.
Just questioning the number.
Sure. No, it's a solid number.
Okay. I see nothing in the budget for temporary fencing around the golf course. I know this is a very sensitive issue.
Yep.
With people trespassing and vandalizing the golf course during the growing period, where is the money budgeted for fencing around the golf course?
Operational. So fencing is going to be installed this Friday on the north side of the course. The cost for that expenditure is $1,800 for that. We're going to take over the rest of the construction. We're working through the pricing on that, but it's going to be very minimal since it's already installed and all we have to pay is for the removal.
Can you show us a map and a plan and show us where the, at the next meeting, where the damage has occurred and how you're going to prevent that? People coming out of the course. I know we have volunteers now monitoring the golf course because we have people riding their bicycles, playing golf, and otherwise, I would call it vandalizing the golf course. I want to make sure we have sufficient funds to fence the course and keep people off.
Can do.
Special rec funds, existing ADA path, or excuse me, the existing path at Centennial that gets down to Mid Bluff Beach is not conforming to ADA standards. It's too steep.
Correct.
Is that part of the $60,000?
So once again, it's the cost to go over that installation. So if the current path is in place and we have to recreate that and change that design, it's whatever inherent cost over that design would be. So as we build this out and we get better.
That's my, that's my comment, my question, my statement. The current path does not meet ADA standards.
Correct.
Does the $60,000 cover the cost to rebuild that path in a conforming nature, consistent with the plan?
The $60,000 that's noted in here for now for 2024, that path would not probably be constructed in '24, probably be more likely constructed in 2025. The number in $60,000 in here for 2025, the cost for the pathway versus.
But it could.
It could help offset the cost, not.
It could be built in '24. There's no reason why.
It could be built in '24, but it's, once again, we're based on permit and timing and when we.
The stairs, the stairs that take us from the top, from the mid bluff down to the beach level at Centennial, obviously are not ADA conforming.
Correct.
If we're replacing those stairs with the path, does that qualify for a similar upgrade?
The steer, so if we replace the steers with the pathway, once again, it would be the additional cost up and over, and that's where we need to review those and plug those numbers in. So like I said, '25 is a placeholder, and we're looking to include that or increase that as we come up with the final totals based on the final design.
Okay.
So those are going to be adjusted, 2025 will be adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Brute?
Costa, in 1500 on Maple, there are gamia baskets that are at Maple that are showing some breakage. Is that considered part of the operational budget to repair those?
So maintenance for the, yeah, so the basket that you're talking, I believe, on the south end.
Right.
Yeah, that's going to be under R and M.
And then for painting, is painting inclusive, the painting, the exterior of the beach house?
For Maple.
Uh huh.
Yep, and that's just been completed.
Okay, so it's done already. I haven't been down there in a couple of weeks. And then as far as, again, 1500 or 3700, Tower, I don't see anywhere in our long-range budget. We had talked, particularly when we were working on relocation to Dog Beach, of a future breakwater that would be on the south side of Tower to prevent the riptide that is around the village pier there. Is there, are we looking at that at all in our long-range budget plan?
In the long-range budget plan, we have not identified that placeholder. We can take a look at that with forward direction. If we want to move forward with the initial engineering design of that, we can review the cost for that, come up with an engineering cost estimate, and then build that into the budget accordingly. Right now, where we were at with our funds and our budgeting, where focus was on Elder Centennial, and then shortly after that, we have the replacement of the turf fields and the lighting upgrades here for this program. So I would say if we look into that, that would be probably a '26 expenditure, but.
The only reason I suggested is we identified that there was a hazard there, and so with a focus on safety, wouldn't it be a good idea to at least explore that?
I can provide a little more color because I addressed that with the village. It's a village-owned pier, and you've noticed that it's been temporarily fenced off with a great deal of improvement going on in prior years. There is an inlet there to the cooling bays that are associated with the power plant. In my discussion with the village, they were not inclined to permit stone to be placed off the toe of that because they're afraid it would block the intake for the cooling bays. So that is really a village matter. I would suggest, I totally agree with you regarding riptide, I think it's something that should be addressed. It's a village-owned facility, we need to get their consent and cooperation.
In the interest of intergovernmental cooperation and collaboration, I would at least like let us look at this.
I'm.
I think, I think we both agree on that, and so I'd like to see it noted somewhere, you know, in our long-range capital plan.
The question is whether. The question is whether or not, the question is whether or not it's a village improvement or it's a park district improvement.
Well, if we're building breakwaters, which is your, you know, area of expertise, I would think that that would come under Park. Just, just, I don't think the village goes out and builds breakwaters, but who knows, right?
How about I take this matter up with village staff?
Thank you so much.
Discuss that from there. I have a note here already, based on that comments. We have also talked about the way we need improvements there as well.
Right.
To help shield that and build up the eastern wall of that as well. Once again, we held back on those projects, we're focusing our efforts where we are currently, and we'll definitely look to expand those up accordingly once we have those conversations.
Thank you again, long-range, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Rat?
First, I do want to thank Jim for his time for pre-meeting, he's been through significant time. I just had one comment that I wanted to share with the group that in the long-range plan there should be a Crow Island survey in 2025, 2026. I think that we've, we've heard back, but it's not reflected in the presentation, so if you could just make sure it gets into the presentation, that would be helpful, you know, to visit the plan if it's discussed, and that just needs to...
Jim shared that information, that question with me, and the reason we held off right now is timing. We're not sure that it's not going to be at '24 because of the pending construction with stormwater, so we've put that in 2025 or '26 once that wraps up, but we have it noted as a placeholder, similar to Spooky Playfield and the plan of survey for this. Now that that's completed and Little Duke's completed, we're looking to have this resurveyed, so yeah, that's on our mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just haven't plugged in a placeholder.
Yeah, whether it's 2026 or 2027, I just know it's good to have no bid, the next year, hopefully look at this.
It'll be in there, we'll put it in there.
Jim and Costa, thank you very much for a very thorough and detailed discussion here this evening. Moving along to Agenda Item Six, Unfinished Business, 6.1, Discussion of Elder Lane and Centennial Beach Project Final Concept Plans. Costa, we're back to you.
Eric, thank you. Toby, if I can have you change the slide over to bring up a presentation to show Phase One of the Elder and Centennial Design Plan. Thank you. Up on the screen and in the packet on page 44 for those viewing through the packet, you have in front of you a conceptual plan for Elder Centennial Phase One. Phase One plan, with the exception of a few subtle tweaks, has not changed by any large chord. When we take a look at the Elder Lane site, you'll see that with the relocation of the stormwater and the proposed maintaining of the Elder Lane here at the toe of the pier, you'll see two directional arrows there. We did include a new staircase to take somebody from that elevation platform of where G is down to I, the existing pier, or down to either side of the swim zones without having to traverse all the way down the ADA ramp to the north and then come back all the way south. In addition to that stairway, we had a stair access that went from west to east that was adjacent to the 261 property, property owner in the center of the illustration there. That staircase would allow an individual to walk down from the platform hype of G, as it's shown on the map here, down to beach level to continue traversing the beach. What we decided to do here is to include some natural stone steps identified in Structure A to the right, the breakwater structure that is a half structure coming off the existing south centennial, or excuse me, Elder Steel Steel Wall there. That staircase is designed to be a natural set of stones, so anybody traversing the beach can continue walking beyond that and continue south and across 261 and continue on to Centennial Beach in that capacity. When we look to the north, we have identified the breakwater structure there, the staircase that is through the breakwater structure currently and was proposed, that's going to be natural stone steps set throughout, and then we have the access point down there as well coming off the ADA ramp. You'll see the access from the, from J, the parking lot, coming down to ramp C, going down to that area. There was some concerns early on about flooding. Our concerns are less because of the elevations and the topography there for the site. We'll review the engineering behind that and get some sort of work and make sure that that concern is addressed as well. From there, we are showing, as previously shown, with the, with the existing pier staying and the condition assessment report, which I have received and I have reviewed, I will share after I complete my review with the park board. The, the pier itself, we are looking to do minimal improvements, basically shoring up the eastern end as we've identified before. Right now, there is just a 16 by 16, 16 foot by 16 foot extension on the end of the pier, solidifying that element. Through there, on the beach itself, the sand counters have changed based on the new design work. Those, once again, are estimations. The lake level changes, the sand will change. That's going to be a fluid design, especially with the structure in the middle, the pier itself is porous. It's light, in its fact, it is not a hard, a hard edge, even though it is, might seem that way being a pier, but it's fluid throughout. It's a stick-built structure, if you will, with the columns set with the placeholders of the, you know, column dogones, if you will, that make up that structure. So there's, sand does flow through that structure, so there is nothing to hold that back, but it does help retain a little bit of sand as shown here. So somebody would be able to come down the beach, gain access to the sand, either at those three different ends or traverse the entire site from north to south accordingly. The dimensions on here, as shown, haven't changed greatly. A has been brought back a few feet, once again, almost coinciding where the end of the existing steel is, as shown in the yellow line to the right of the north breakwater and, and from there. As we move forward from Elder Lane, we'll take a look at Centennial, once again, taking in consideration access for maintenance. We took a little further deep dive into...
Excuse me one second.
Go ahead.
Can you just go to the blow-up? Do you have the blow-up slides? It'd be so much easier to see.
For Phase Two, we have those blow-up slides.
But even for what you're describing, it's impossible for anybody to...
You want to go to the third slide?
Yeah.
Large one.
Yeah, yeah, March, got that.
Go back.
There, yeah, and then back one more. Elder Two?
Yep, so go back, there you go.
There, way better.
So here in Phase Two enlargement, there's not much change for Elder. Elder in Phase One and Phase Two essentially stay the same. There's not a big change to it, in fact, there's no change to it. So Phase One, Phase Two of Elder stays the same. Toby, if you can move to the second one. So please note that the structure in the center shown here in Phase Two is not what's actually identified in Phase One. The structure in Phase One is not as robust, it's smaller setting of stone with a single line of steel to separate the Dog Beach from the Stone Beach to the north. The expansion of the boardwalk to the, to the north here just below D as it's shown, and the D itself, the element of the ADA ramp are non-existent in Phase One. Otherwise, the design element of G, the ADA access walk going, or pathway going down along with the work for C and the inclusion of the Dog Beach with the fencing and the access ramp stair to the south, the integrated ramp stair as shown to the right of C are included in Phase One. As we move into Phase Two for Centennial, you'll see the improvement here. The biggest change is repurposing the materials from Phase One. If we were to go that, if we go right into design efforts for Phase Two, we wouldn't have to rehandle any materials, but we would build out the structure shown here for the pier at Centennial as shown. The pier itself is a long structure that goes out when we have a 30-foot, 30-foot in diameter circular end on it, and the structure itself is basic, or encompassed with stone all the way around. Handrails are proposed at least halfway out to where the sand and the water would turn, as well as the improvements now include extension of the boardwalk, so as you see below D here, noted out to the, to the north, as well as the inclusion of D itself, the ADA ramp and the excessive, excess piece for that. The elements at Centennial and the Dog Beach to the right of the screen are the same as before. Please note, I know there was a question before about improvements being made to Centennial Beach that could be potentially given away within the property exchange. All the improvements that are identified here are not on any parcel with the exception of the dog fencing on the 70 feet for the potential property exchange. The fencing from where the directional arrow is off the C to the right, just beyond that is approximately 70 feet, so there would have to be a design and a review of the fencing there, but at this point in time, since that is on hold, we are still continuing with our design as we were directed by the park board in 2022, late 2022, to move forward with no indications and no design details for the exchange, just move forward with our plan in its entirety, and that's what we've done here. The last part that I'll comment on is G itself, the access path, has been widened now to allow an adapt for our vehicles to come down there. We need to maintain this site to, once again, to try to offset costs versus having to do things marine-based. We now able to get a track skid steer down to each B site and our tractors to maintain, clean and maintain these two functional beaches for the community. Those are the pieces and the large elements for the Phase Two improvements. Let's get a handle up. So, sure.
This will be easy. I've looked at these a bunch of times, but I did a little, you know, like, let's look at the scale versus where the property line is. I feel like the steps might need to be at the bottom near the F on the southern side are like, the bottom step is like right at the property line, maybe right over the property, it's, it's hard to tell from the...
I would not scale off of these plans because they're not designed to be scaled.
Okay.
The CAD background that builds this, we do have noted and we made sure that we are beyond the 70-foot threshold.
Okay, so the steps, you won't like walk off the bottom of the step onto?
Correct.
Okay. The other thing is, is I think that the 205 plan is not...
That is not currently, it's been approved, right? That was the rendering that we had previously. We don't have the current design that was approved to be overlaid, so that is a false indicator, if you will, that their plan has changed, location of the steps have changed, elevations have changed.
Okay.
Based on the re-review between the village and the Army Corps and the IDNR.
Okay.
So yes, that is a placeholder, if you will, it's not an actual showing of what is there.
Okay.
Or what's been approved, I should say. Kelly?
On the steps, you already, you stalled my question on that, but for the benefit of everyone here and those at home, can you point where this 70-foot is, where the arrow, what you're talking about, as to what will be fenced, and, and once the exchange occurs, will be on the 70 feet?
Sure.
For the neighbors?
So once again, the design plans that we've put together thus far, we did not take in consideration the exchange. We are instructed to move forward with our site of what we own, so we speak kindness in of that piece. The fencing here, the green line as it traverses through here, that will have to be moved to the north to allow for that 70-foot property line exchange.
I just want to know where the 70-foot marker is.
Probably around here.
Costa, excuse me, there's no discussion of the exchange, there is no contemplation of changing anything. You are making that up out of whole cloth. Please do not put, make assumptions for this board's actions. There have been absolutely zero direction, and we've said, the exchange is dormant.
Correct.
As said at the last meeting, there's no political will to proceed with the exchange, it's subject of litigation. This plan is independent of that. Do not make assumptions and do not make assertions that are not consistent with the board action.
I think, should I play more? I think it's a fair question. Maybe dormant, but it still exists.
Dormant means sleeping, dead means dead, and I am optimistic.
This design was not taken into consideration with the exchange.
If I may, if I may, I am still very optimistic that we will have a combined beach. That is, that has been the desire of the 2030 plan on which we have based all this work, and I am still optimistic that when someone says something is dormant to me, that means it can be awakened at any time. But my, my whole question was not on any of this, it was trying to see where the 70-foot marker was on this rendering, not only for my benefit, but also for the benefit of the public that may be watching this online.
There is a 70-foot marker because this design was not taken into consideration with the exchange, as I stated previously. This design was independent of that as directed by the park board. Based on your questions this evening, the 70 feet is approximately in this area. What happens with this? I am making assumptions, but I have not been given direction by the board to do so. Once again, this plan was designed not taking into consideration the exchange, only our property as we go.
Thank you, Costa. I'm sorry to have caused any problems.
No problems at all. Any other questions? Toby, if you can move on to Phase Three real quick. So the last piece, once again, with the exchange where it is currently, this plan here shows the acquisition, we're acquiring 261 without giving up any property. Once again, this is a Phase Three, this is a far-fetched, you know, not far-fetched, but this is a future implementation of what that would be to acquire 261, not in consideration with any exchange. The stone that was previously located on the steel to the south of Elder property line is now relocated out into the water, creating a offset island, once again, to help create better flow throughout, better sand retention, and now we have the inclusion of the boardwalk carrying through from Element C and Element B connecting back to Elder Lane Park, once again, completing the loop, if you will, for ADA access and our 1,000-foot large, or 1,000-foot plus beach for both Elder and Centennial combined. Once again, there's a lot of things that have to happen to this, and this design was taken into consideration with acquire the property without an exchange. Any other questions? So I would like to get better clarity because this, as we continue to move forward the project, I'd like to move forward with a single plan to get final renderings completed for, for the 19th, as well as final cost estimates for the 19th as well.
With, with respect to Phases One and Two, how, how are, I know we have talked about the fact that marine construction is cost prohibitive, so do we assume, and I looked at your footnote, that this assumes that we are going to have a construction easement across 261? Is, I presume that is the assumption?
There are assumptions being made.
To be able to do that? And have you entered into any discussions with respect to securing that construction easement across 261?
At this point in time, we have not.
Thank you, Costa.
So, as I was saying, I would like to get better direction, direction from the park board in regards to not a vote, but a straw poll to give staff direction to move forward with one plan and one plan slowly so we can continue to move forward.
Go ahead.
Peter Hammond, could you go back to the Elder detailed plan, please? Question number one, the existing steel, shown in yellow, is to be removed, extends out 219 feet, it's been consistent to mention.
Correct.
Prior plan showed the new breakwater to the north extending an equal distance. This revised plan shows approximately 211 feet. Why the change?
The change was basically part of the design overall. Matt, from your standpoint, it's minimal at best, right? Once we get to a final approved plan, we can select the distance and build that distance accordingly, right?
Correct.
So if the board approves and we want to move forward with 219, we'll move forward with 219. Right now, where it's placed on here with the stone placement as it was rendered, there is a little bit of fluctuation, so I apologize about that.
The steps, as shown on this plan, up and over, appear to be very structured. It's my understanding that we were intending to, we initially conceded that, but why are we, why wouldn't we simply take a more cost-effective approach and use natural stone steps up and over the middle of, or at approximately the same distance as the steps up and over as were approved on the south side at 205? If you go back to the detail of the Centennial plan, my understanding is that the steps as shown on the Ishbia plan on the right side of this have been moved closer to the bluff to approximate where that, that sand-water transition would be.
That is correct.
Is it, should we not take the same approach on the north side?
We can.
Is the south side?
We can move that to the, to the, or to the east from where they're located right now. The steps are identi- The steps are identified as stone stairs as shown on the cost estimate line item 31 for $30,000.
They are natural stone stairs. Can you go back to the detail? That's my, you know, what's not, I think it would be very instructive for us to have updated plans that show what's immediately adjacent. So we should show the property to the north and show the offset in the steel and the existing boat ramp. I don't think it is constructive, knowing that sand's going to accrete in this corner by virtue of this stone groin, that we put the steps back in a location that takes people right into the side of an existing steel boat ramp. It should be out more towards where the, where the water's edge would be or further out than that and not create an inherent conflict between an existing structure to the north and the proposed location of the stairs.
So the design here with the offset of the angle that you're seeing there takes the stair landing past the end of the existing stone at the north property owner's ramp and their infrastructure that they have built in, hence the offset in direction. The reason that we brought it in and turned it as we did, because you're able to now walk from the platform onto the stairs and go either north or south from the platform itself. That was the driver for that. The board would like us to re-look at that and move the stairs across in a single linear faction to the east a little bit, so they're straight across, similar to other designs. We can do that as well. But this tied it in, so you had access from the boardwalk. And then it directed you beyond the, the, or the infrastructure built to the north property.
Next question regarding the pier. The existing Elder Pier was constructed in 1947. An agreement was reached between the Village and the Park District wherein the Village placed a 54-inch diameter storm sewer pipe underneath the pier and the Park District constructed the pier. I understand that the Village has, despite the fact that the Village signed off on a permit application to relocate the stormwater discharge to under the new stone groin, that they have since changed their mind and suggested that their preference is to preserve the existing stormwater discharge. Thus, that is why we are now showing the 75-year-old pier being resuscitated with an improved end section. Is that correct?
Correct. We are maintaining the pier, maintaining the pier because of the outfall, and we have not included the, the storm grade in there. Our proposal would be to remove the infrastructure and just leave the pier as it is. Correct.
So I would just like to be on the record that that is, that maintaining that pier is inconsistent with the original vision for Elder Park and Beach. And it also leaves in place an antiquated storm sewer system, including the 100-year-old storm sewer pipe that runs from Sheraton Road out to the bluff beneath very large existing trees. I would hope and suggest that we could continue dialogue because I understand further that if that is to remain in place, that we might not be able to relocate or even propose stormwater pipes underneath the north groin. Is that accurate?
So if you could take a step back when you say it was to remain in place?
If the existing discharge is to remain as shown, would we be able to prospectively construct the two discharge pipes underneath the stone groin?
So the answer to that question is no, based on the review from both the IDNR and Army Corps. Based on telephone conversations with those team members, they would not allow for that improvement to take place, knowing that there is a consisting outfall that's still functioning, because the end result of the proposed outfall could potentially be a new service outfall and not be a replacement for the existing. So they would not permit for us to put in the infrastructure built in for that outfall as represented originally. So staff would be looking to move forward without including those pipes as a cost savings to the project and also our inability to permit that work.
And the Village has suggested that they are going to conduct a stormwater study for Southeast Wenetka, the 300-plus acres that discharges through the existing pipe?
That is what I'm aware of. I believe that's consistent, Christina, with the conversations I've viewed that with the Village representatives.
So I think it's incumbent upon our community as a whole to work together so that the Village and the Park District could come together and discuss this in a very constructive way, so we can understand that the decision that we make going forward will have ramifications and implications that cannot be changed, not without millions of dollars of additional expense.
Let me just say one thing. The, the conversations, the timing of the completion of their Southeast Wenetka stormwater survey is uncertain. They may complete it in the course of our permitting processes. I'm not sure. I believe it will take them a year. I believe that's the deadline that I heard. Obviously, it's disappointing that we can't place the receiving infrastructure.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Obviously, it's disappointing that we can't place the receiving infrastructure in that stone groin, because that would be a helpful preparation. So if we're left with that stormwater discharge pipe there, then we're left with that pier there to house it. We can entertain additional discussions with the Village, but I think they were pretty firm in what their process was.
I'm not certain that the Village understood the ramifications, the implications based on the new permit information Costa just discussed. So I think I would ask staff to please engage in conversation and that you as the liaison to the Village would also engage in this conversation.
Sure. I'll, I'll get in touch. Yes.
And as one who has spent a lot of time dealing with administrative practice with agencies, I've always found that there are ways to convince agencies for exceptions. And here, I would think, this was not in your initial summary, that those pipes would not be included. So this was news to me this evening. And again, I would think that we also would explore additional conversations up the line with the Corps and the IDNR. I'd recommend that. And if we need to, then perhaps we need to engage counsel whose expertise is with particularly the IDNR to assist us in, in that exploration. I would encourage that.
Am I here in board support to move forward with the inclusion of the two stormwater pipes overall? Or is that still something of a topic of discussion?
I for one feel strongly that we should include it because it's a once, truly a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And not doing so forecloses a better plan.
Correct. Correct. I agree. I don't know if your, if people have finished with their questions, but I just wanted to go through a bunch of options that we've, that we've set here.
No, one of the things we haven't talked about is driving the steel sheet piling. That is necessary. And at some point, I understand that we have like three layers of steel sheet piling. And for anyone who has lived in the vicinity of 205, Sheridan, when this work was going on and they were driving the steel sheet piling into the bluff, there, there was a lot of earth vibrations. And so my question is whether we have actually looked at whether we need to examine vibration control, whether we have any concern for any of the surrounding properties, whether there could possibly be any sort of structural damage. And it may be that this is totally different than what has gone on in 205. But, but for those of, you know, I see Mr. Edwards laughing, but I'm worried about you, Mr. Edwards, that I'm worried about your structure.
It feels good if my reclining chair actually...
Okay, you get a massage. But no, it's, it's, for someone who's not technical in any fashion, the question is, do we have any concerns and do we need to look at, you know, whether there's going to be a problem?
So Matt, if you wouldn't mind?
The answer is no. This is common construction techniques. It's short-term. It's part of the process. Without that, you can't drive a sheeting.
Okay, so we're not worried about our beach house on Elder?
Not at all.
Just fine, no problem. And we're not worried about our neighbors?
Not at all.
The, the bigger change, Matt, to elaborate, and this is from my layman's opinion, we're driving into a structure that is in the lake that by itself will absorb a lot of that impact and vibration, so it won't travel, versus where you're driving it just into earth, where that has a lot more chance to travel, correct?
No, I wouldn't go that far. We're driving sheeting into the ground.
It's not a concern?
It's not a concern. This is a common construction technique. We're driving at most 30 feet. This is, nothing's not done every day.
And we're not concerned about the integrity of the bluff in any fashion to do that?
I have no concerns. None.
And that will be in your engineering report?
If you'd like it to be, but I'm not concerned at all.
I, I very much would like to see that in your written engineering report, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Nope.
Do you have a question?
No, I mean, do you think that the Village study would cause a delay in the application process?
Once again, if, the delay would be if we are able to include the stormwater outfall pipes and the timing of that construction, if they would want that to coincide with ours, that potentially could be a delay. But that's the only thing that I could foresee. Our project is, is independent of theirs, with the exception of the inclusion of the pipes now. So...
So as I understand it, we have a couple questions on the table and that you're looking as a direction for. Number one, what is the length of the northern breakwater? I think 219?
Do we want to stay consistent with the existing steel sheet piling? Or as it's proposed right now, it's about 211?
Okay. 219 or 211? Can I take a poll around the room here?
I say we stick with 219.
219.
Cynthia? 219 or 211 for that northern breakwater? 219 is the existing sheet pile?
I think we should go with 211 because if this stormwater stuff comes through at some later point, I think we should be 70 feet.
Wow. Thank you.
211. Thank you. Well, hold on, we're to James. That's okay. James?
211.
Okay.
Question, why the change, gentlemen? Why the technical reason for this change? Because I assume there was one.
There's no reason. It's, it's a concept plan. Things are going to change. Right now, what you see on paper are just purely concepts. That's it. We're trying to get you to understand the idea of what we want to do here. These are by no means final plans. We don't have any sections, any details, no study, no engineering's into this. They're concept level layout plans, I think that's it. Whether it's 219, 200, 150, I don't know yet until we actually design something. These are just lines on paper in concept form.
Okay. So we're giving direction here?
Can I be more clear then?
Yeah.
The proposed north groin should be consistent in length with the existing steel.
When the final plans are prepared, the north groin will be no longer than 219 feet. That's all I can tell you right now.
Great.
Okay. So we have 219, 219, 211, 211.
For someone who likes shorter breakwater, I don't think you should express a preference.
You guys are making a decision here on...
I'll change it, which is no longer than 219.
No longer than 219. Perfect.
Again, these are concept plans, period.
You know me, I don't like breakwaters, so the smaller, the shorter, 211.
All right. I'm happy with no longer than 219.
Same. I will depend on expert opinion.
Indeed, I will defer to experts.
I don't know what the difference is between eight feet. I would rely on my experts to tell me likewise.
Perfect. Okay, that's item one. Item two, the orientation of the steps at the north breakwater. There's some question about that. Costa has indicated that the northernmost section ends deposits of pedestrian clear of the structure, correct?
The current ramp for the north property owner, that clears those structures, yes.
Dancing, okay.
The change that will be is the water and the sand level. When we construct the, the north breakwater as shown here, that sand will naturally collect or collect on the north side and that water level will change accordingly. And that will change based on lake elevation as well.
Right. So there's a maintenance issue.
Well, it's not necessarily a maintenance issue. It's whether you're going to fall at the, at the water's edge on the average or you're going to be on sand or you're going to be in the water. I think it's being suggested on, with the Ishbia property was to, on the average, is to fall within the water. So then you, as you fall and you walk the water line, you're walking the water line. So I think that's what Commissioner James is trying to express here, is that we should follow that theory and the methodology to walk the water's line, have that location coincide with that edge.
Can I speak for myself?
Please.
Thank you.
I apologize.
We understand, we can all acknowledge, that when you build the stone groin, sand will accrete. That's what happens. That's part of the reason why we're proposing the stone groin, so that we can have a more usable public beach. Knowing that, it seems to me that it would be more appropriate to locate the steps where people presumably are permitted to walk along the beach. I understand Illinois law to say that the property owner's rights extend out to the column water's edge. There may be inconsistencies, unclarities.
No, that's wrong.
There's, there are inconsistencies and it should be determined. But what, what is understood is that inviting someone to walk close to the shoreline or close to the bluff is the question. I think we should be consistent with what we've done at Lloyd. We put steps up and over the stone groin at a location that allows somebody that's walking along the beach to conveniently continue their walk along the beach.
And how do the paramedics get there?
Excuse me. Public remarks from, remarks from visitors have already concluded. Commissioner James, any additional comments?
That's it.
So your recommendation is to move those steps waterward?
Waterward so that they allow somebody who's walking along the water's edge to continue their walk without coming back up to the bluff.
Exactly, all over the United States.
I'm going to go around the room the other way this time. Sorry.
I'm all for consistency in design.
We have the, the neighbor who will be impacted by this. May I have the permission to ask Mr. Edwards? Do you have a, you know, we, we work with our neighbors. Do you have a preference? You may not want to say. And you don't have to, if I'm putting you on the spot, John.
You know, here is my issue. I would like to support the Park's application, the Park District's application to the DNR and, and, and every other place you've got to go to. I would like to know, when you step off of that staircase, are you stepping on my property or on yours? And that can be alleviated by just moving the, the breakwater back, you know, on your property. But that's...
Let me try and clarify, because this is a source of great, this is a source of confusion. Matt, please, Matt, please.
Excuse me. I just reminded her, we're in a public meeting. Thank you. Excuse me. We are trying to conduct a public meeting here. Thank you. Commissioner James?
It's important for everyone to understand that what is depicted on this image and the screen shows the limits of construction all the way down to the lake bed. So when we construct this, we will go excavate all the sand into the clay. That's what's shown on this picture. That will, the, the clay depth could be down into the 570 elevation, 570 something. Matt, do you know what the?
572.
572. Normal water fluctuates between 576 and 582. So we are well below the water level as shown on this plan. So the reason why we show the steps up and overs and, and the groin, because that's the limit of construction. In reality, as you would see at Lloyd, the water and the sand cover most of the improvement. That's not what you'll see when you go out there. You'll see the exposed portion, that which emanates above the sand level. When sand accretes, it will be a much smaller-looking structure, knowing that that, that, that trapezoid extends down well below the sand down to the lake bed clay and into the lake bed clay. So John, I am quite confident that people stepping off of the bottom of the stair where it meets the sand will be on Park District property.
Any other comments? Any other recommendations?
I just had a question about the stairs, because the stairs at Lloyd are not, like, in line with what regulations for stairs would be. And with the village permitting change, will the stairs on these structures need to be more like in performance with what you would expect for public stairs? You know, like railings, like
That's a
the height, the steps.
Two points. Again, this is a concept plan. We're just trying to show the concept. There's stairs across the breakwater, whether they're there. Twenty feet out, I don't think we need to split hairs over where it is. We're providing stairs. Exactly what they are at this point, that all gets hammered out as we move forward into the design phase. Right now, they're showing us stone stairs. They're not as if they're stairs walking into these buildings. They're to provide public access. Period.
I do like the idea of the stairs being close to the boardwalk. That's, it seems to be a nice thing, particularly since if we have high water, again, which we might, then you're sure that the stairs can still be accessed regardless of where the water is. And then you don't have years where the stairs are out in the middle of the lake. So I like that they're closer in, and I think that was, you know, that's a benefit. And I thought the angle was good, because I do know that there's the boat ramp. Like, when I looked at this, I thought, okay, why is that like that? But I remembered that there's the boat ramp going down. So I think it, I mean, to me, this feels more like friendly to the public.
The concerns that I've heard tonight, Art Penland has, as Matt already iterated, is conceptual level. These are just basic conceptual plans when we get into design drawings and then ultimately the construction documents. We just need to make sure that we have parameters around what our design is. Elevations, materials, distances. From there, those things will be fine tuned with the selection of materials and so forth. Right now, we are anticipating natural stone steps. From what I understand with the review for the Ishpiya property at two oh five, those are natural stone steps, and they're going to be placed in a similar set, or fashion. There's nothing that I've heard that they have to be cut stone to a certain tread rise and run. They just have to be natural steps that are passable, you know, and that would be consistent with any other project that you've constructed, Matt, and any other project that is up and down the lakefront in Wenecka. So we're going to do our best to make sure that the contractor, whoever that is, puts the steps in there, in this case, the natural stone, in a flat tread capacity, so they're easily traversable.
So you're looking for direction regarding the location of the steps, correct?
Wow.
Or you're
Potentially, if there's a design change from this, but once again, this is a ballpark of where it is. This is not set per the inch exactly where it is. This is just an indicator. There's still three levels of review beyond us that this has to go through. The board may come back and say, nope, put them out thirty feet, or they might say, nope, bring them back. I don't know. That's, I can't determine that until we have a planned permit submitted, so they can review. We're trying to get to that phase, so we can have one plan that we can submit. And that's what we're looking for, is to get direction, hopefully, to move forward with Phase Two, per staff's recommendation.
Mindful of the fact that we want to make sure that people step off of that breakwater on the northern side onto our property, I would say please accommodate that.
Yep, and that's already being accounted for.
Perfect. Anyone else have a comment?
I recall that at Lloyd, we have had residents come and ask for railings, and it's by understanding that a railing was put up. So, you know, just, just a suggestion, conceptually, that there are railings for people on, on the stone. And then I would presume, help me out here, expert, but I would presume that sand is going to accrete on the, the, the north, our south, on the north, Edwardson's south side of the breakwater and our north side. So, so sand should, Mr. Edwardson ought to get a larger beach. Is that not correct? Because of that breakwater?
Correct.
Yeah. So the beach that accretes will be done by artificial means, so that, if I understand Illinois and federal law, that part of the beach will be public beach. So, and, and you, you and I could disagree about it, John, but my point is
I don't share that opinion. I would suggest refer to Peter Freeman's memo that it was written and submitted in January. I think that's pretty definitive, at least from the Village of Wenecka's perspective. So just refer to Peter Freeman's memo from January of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. So I think the final point you want some clarity on from the board is whether we build this stone groin with the accepting infrastructure or not, or we, we plan with the accepting infrastructure or not. Is that correct?
As it relates to Centennial.
Correct.
Yes. So are we looking to move forward with Phase Two, or are we looking forward to move with a variation? That's what I need direction.
Here's how I see this process unfolding, and correct me if I'm wrong. Number one, if we build into the north stone groin the accepting pipes in the event that they move the stormwater discharge pipe, number one. And number two, if we, if we continue to plan with a Phase Two breakwater in Centennial, each of those elements could be revised during permit review.
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
That would delay that process, but potentially
I understand, I understand. But I think that's the right way to plan. I think that's the right way to plan for the village to, in good faith, put in that accepting infrastructure in the plan and, and help them understand that if they can reroute, that would be terrific, and that's a huge savings to them. So I would say plan with the accepting infrastructure in the north groin, number one. And number two, I would say plan for the Phase Two breakwater in Centennial. Plan for that. If we do not, if we're not allowed to do that by permit or financing, we will have to remove that and go back and make change orders. But I think that's the right way to plan, because that's the optimistic, correct expectation right now.
So if we were to do the infrastructure build-in into the north breakwater of Elder, essentially building in the two thirty-six inch discharge pipes, we potentially could lose, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, anywhere between sixty to ninety days of lead time for permit review from when it's first submitted to when they would potentially reject it, and then we would be starting over. So now we could be looking at construction into twenty twenty-five and twenty-six and be
No, I disagree. I disagree, Costa. I, I'm sorry, I disagree.
That's okay. I mean
That's not an
Correct, feel free to correct me, Warren. I'm suggesting that if, if we do submit to that plan and we include the infrastructure based on the initial conversations that I've had with the regulatory agencies.
We authorize, this board authorized staff to proceed with permit application in May of twenty twenty-five. It's now October of twenty twenty-five. I understand that we have been delayed because there have been changes to the ordinance enacted by the village and including changes to the all previously approved, signed off permit application that rerouted the storm sewer. So yes, there are certain delays. I also know that in, in my mind, and I think Colleen and I are in agreement in this one, that the storm sewer should be relocated, and we should put the provisions underneath the north groin. So I'm fully supportive of moving forward with that. And I also agree that we should lobby to understand that to preserve the possibility of doing so is important to this community, even if the decision will be delayed.
I agree. I think it's a village benefit.
I am certain that there, that everyone in Springfield, from Springfield to Chicago knows about this particular project. And I'm certain that it will get prompt attention, because most people are already very familiar with what's going on. So I'd suggest we proceed forthwith with the plans as proposed, including Phase One and Phase Two. And let's move on. This community deserves action. It deserves results. It does not deserve further delay.
Okay. So the question on the table is accepting infrastructure in the northern breakwater, number one. And number two, including that breakwater in Centennial, which is now Phase One being rolled into Phase Two. So I'm going to pull through here. Warren, I think I understand your opinion, yes, to the accepting infrastructure, yes, to the Phase Two breakwater in Centennial. Jeff, would you like to, do you feel comfortable?
I would say include them both. My experience, it's easier to pull things out than start over by adding new elements later.
Excellent. Okay. Cynthia?
I think they have a skeleton in place so that the stormwater makes sense. Hopefully, the plan will be forthcoming, because it would be ideal to have that project done same time.
Right.
And then as far as Phase Two, as long as we can pull back if we need to.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
James?
Did you want to say something else?
We need to circle back on the stairs.
Okay. Well, I, I think we've decided that the stairs should be consistent, and then the fine tuning of the stairs is definitely something to be watched. Colleen, do you want to talk about the accepting infrastructure in the Phase Two?
I'm all for putting pipe in our Elder breakwater. I think that's logical. As far as Phase Two Centennial breakwater, if that'll move to wherever our actual boundary is, it doesn't divide a beach in half, which it currently does. And I'm sorry, guys, I'll continue to lobby until you're sick of me. I don't understand why you would ever put a breakwater in the middle of a beach. I don't understand from a technical standpoint, and I will stand on my soapbox and keep asking this question again.
We're just polling.
Yeah, again, we're polling, but what I have found in the last year is something that is a concept suddenly becomes carved in granite. I've been seeking a pure review of this design for over a year.
We're polling. I'm going to stop you.
Okay.
Because everybody wants to stay their opinion on the polling.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can stop me, but I will still go on record as saying I don't understand why we put a breakwater in the middle of a beach. But I'm all for the Elder infrastructure. I think that only is logical. I am not at all in favor of moving forward to Phase Two, because we, again, are very optimistic that ultimately we will have two sixty-one and know what we have there.
Eric?
I'm in favor of both. I think it's the, ultimately, the right thing to do for the Village of Wenecka.
I agree. I am also in favor of both. Does that help you?
Yes.
Are there any other points where you want clarity?
Just on the steps. I didn't hear what, what Jeff and James have to say about the steps.
Yeah, my view is the same as Christina's functionally, which is we can have a concept here. We can design it to ensure that when we have, when we come off the stairs, as we come up. And I also agree by the way, the stairs are conforming with all of the state laws in respect to ADA. We can deal with that.
Any, any other points where we need clarity?
Just further clarification. The image that you see on the screen shows a concrete and steel pier surrounded by stone that separates the dog beach from the people beach. It is a continuation of an ADA accessible path. So somebody in a wheelchair or who otherwise had difficulty walking can go from Sherden Road and continuously compliant path all the way down to the boardwalk level, out onto the pier, can sit and enjoy the views of the lake unassisted. That, in my opinion, is one of the primary objectives of the Lakefront Master Plan, to provide ADA accessible features, which are otherwise not available. Separating the dog beach from the people beach is also a very important thing and allowing public access to the balance of Centennial. Those are all things that we decided back in
I think we have answered your requests for clarity.
You did. I will, I will disagree with Commissioner James in regards to the timeline. I, I can't speak on behalf of regulatory agencies or the village process.
I know.
So if we submit with this format and it delays the project, I will suggest that there's a potential that that would delay construction overall. I can't say for certain.
I understand.
But I just want to make sure that the board is aware that if we move forward with infrastructure built in, that could be a delay in permitting. Matt, feel free to opine if you'd like to. If not, that's fine as well.
It's going to get outright rejection. Period.
I understand. I think that
And then you have to re-submit again, so you might, and they might not say that until six months from now. They're not going to say it.
I understand.
It's okay.
That's okay?
No.
It's okay. I, I believe it's okay. We have been on this for a really long time, and I ultimately believe it's the right thing to do. So I think we have to try.
Between now and next two weeks voting meeting on this, I will try and have an additional conversation with people at the village to understand if there's any way that they would consider circling back to the application that they had signed off on that we had submitted in June. I will definitely ask that question, because I think it's worth asking. But I would like to make the sincere effort to build that accepting infrastructure. I think it's the right thing to do.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah. Okay.
So duly noted. Just as a reminder, commissioners, if you could continue to project your voice for both the guests in attendance as well as watching the video, that'd be super helpful. Thank you, Costa, on six point one. Coming back to you again, six point two, discussion of Elder Lane and Centennial Beach project area engineering cost estimates. Costa, it's all yours.
Eric, thank you, sir. Toby, if you don't mind, can you pull up the cost of, thank you. On the screen here in front of you, Matt and the team put together four different approaches to this plan based on the recent conversation. I'm not going to bore you with Phase One or Phase Two, Phase, Phase Three. I'm going to fast forward to the combined efforts, which starts on line two thirty-three, which is combined Elder and Centennial Phase Two construction. Toby, if you can scroll down to line two thirty-three, if you don't mind. I think it should be
Page sixty?
Keep going. This one right here. Yep.
It's the top of page sixteen of the board document.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So as we review the cost estimate, the items that we discussed are ready. You'll see in here the construction needs and methods. Once again, this is based on shoreline work. We will bid the project accordingly, as we've discussed previously, to try to get and yield a better price and also the understanding of the impacts to the community and what a marine number would be for the bid process. We can put that in as an alternate. But what I wanted to kind of review here, I'm not going to go in a granular level. I don't think that's needed. You've seen the, the cost breakdown and estimates before. There hasn't been a lot of change. The changes that you're going to see around Elder with the inclusion of the new stairs that we included in here, as well as some of the adjustments for the staircases at Centennial to make those two-fold ramps slash stairs for access and ease equipment. For the most part, those are the biggest changes that you'll see through this document. What I would like to focus on is at the later part of the document, when you get towards the end, you'll see the price break total. The thing that I want to draw your attention to and kind of review here, give it a second. The cost breakdown for the project, as it relates to moving in forward with its single focus, with the stormwater now, instead of without, we're looking at a price contingency of fourteen thousand, fourteen million, two hundred and twenty thousand. That includes a one point eight million dollar contingency with a base cost, including the stormwater, as I suggested, of twelve million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars base cost. With the project out of the storm sewer, there's a reduction there. But as directed by the park board, we'll move forward the permit plan accordingly, including the outfalls integrated into the north breakwater at Elder.
Say the fourteen million number again, if you don't mind.
Sure. Fourteen million, two hundred and twenty thousand.
Thanks.
That, once again, I'm not going to go through each line item. There's been a lot of careful review of that through all firms that have taken part of this. The Lakota Group, Spaceco, Christopher Burke, and Matt and his team reviewing all that information. We have driven to that cost. I would like to note that the cost estimates that were included in the Capital Master Plan did not take in consideration the outfall pipes, so there will be a correction to that. It's not going to be a heavy correction, because that infrastructure will be on more of the twenty twenty-five expenditure versus the twenty-four expenditure, but something just to note. Not to delay this process, but is there any questions I can ask in regard, answer in regards to the cost estimates at this time in a granular?
One hundred and sixty thousand is the cost to fix the pier. Is that comparable to the estimate from ages ago, the four hundred thousand to fix the pier?
The cost estimate is based on the review that Matt did.
The one sixty is just to build a new platform out there. It's not a repair of the pier. It's just to remove that steel gradient fail and build a new public plaza out there. We don't have any details. We just put placeholder one sixty.
Okay.
That's all. It could be rounded, it could be, who knows what. Right now, we just want to show, so we're proposing something out there.
I won't get too locked up in one sixty, but I thought, wow, that's a phenomenal value. Solve that problem.
The pier is in really good shape.
Okay.
Are there any other questions as it relates to the combined cost estimate for Phase Two? for Phase Two Elder and Centennial with inclusion of the proposed stormwater outfalls?
Hearing none. Moving to 6.3. Discussion of Elder Lane and Centennial Beach Project, frequently asked questions. Costa?
Eric, thank you.
End of the hour.
Appreciate it. As we discussed before, and we went through line by line, included in the board pocket are the FAQs, the original ones that were put together by Christina based on all the information that she's taken in over the course of months and years here. It feels like years and years, but... And then there is also questions that have arrived from Cynthia Rapp, ones that she wants to include for the FAQs. Completed in the pocket are the answers to those FAQs. They have been reviewed. They are online, I believe. Christina, if I'm not mistaken, you're looking to share those in the farmer's market and we already have copies to hand out as needed. Is there any questions or concerns in regards to any of the FAQs that I can answer or help direct answers from?
The additional ones I added were about the donation, the surveying, and the timeline. And I'll address the donation in item 6.4.
Any questions on the frequently asked questions? Hearing none. Christina, we're going to move to 6.4. The discussion of proposed $3 million donation to the Oneeka Park District from the Justin Nishby family to support the Elder Lane and Centennial Beach Project.
So I wanted to be very clear about what our process is. Step one is to meet with the donor, and we have not yet set a meeting date. So that is not yet certain, but that would be step one. We have identified the people who are going to meet, but we do not yet have a meeting date. Step two would be discussion in public and with the board. This is a public board matter, and it will be discussed in public with the entire board. And then step three will be the vote. And I do not know what the timeline for each of those three events would be, largely because the first event would be the meeting. So obviously, it's interesting to us, but it is not urgent for us as we have a budget process and we have a permitting process that will be the higher priorities. However, we will obviously seek the first meeting available and report that problem.
Any questions for Christina?
Well, Adam, like I know there have been some questions about which policy applies. Could we accept something? Will he be providing some opinion and guidance about that through the process? Because I would see that as a step.
He will be completely involved. He will be completely involved.
Do you think we might secure a written legal opinion from our attorney? I know I've asked for it. I believe Commissioner Rapp has asked for it. And I think it would be very helpful to have.
I think step one is the meeting because we don't yet know what those conditions might be.
And for this meeting, could we possibly return to our agreed procedure where we're going to have a prepared agenda by council? That will be... The board will have an opportunity to review before the meeting, and then we will have a summary prepared after the meeting. This is something that we worked hard on last year.
I think that's always been the case when we've done it in closed. I think since all of this is going to be in open, it's an unnecessary formality, but I'm happy to consider it. I feel like we don't yet have a meeting date, and our question is more seeking to find out what those conditions, if any, might be. So that's really the agenda at this point.
Can commissioners add their wish list to the items to be discussed?
You know, let's table that until we have a meeting, okay? When we give a date, then we'll think about it. Yeah.
So you and I were in the meeting.
Yes.
When the offer, when a pre-approved question was asked.
Yes.
Regarding the donation.
Correct.
And the offer was made. And I think we understand that Representative David Williams, representing Order 2020, Justin Nishby family, offered to donate $3 million in furtherance of the Phase Two plan, specifically allowing us to construct that pier that is a continuation of the ADA path. So we know very well what the purpose of the use of those funds is for. I think there was some discussion, as I reported on in the last meeting, about naming rights, which was new and different, and I reported it to this body here. I think it would be very helpful if our two councils were to communicate with one another and come together with the draft that they've prepared for us to look at. I don't think there's any hope that seven people trying to openly negotiate document that is, in essence, a donation would come to fruition. So why don't we just give counsel? Why don't we give counsel there to give us something to consider?
Okay, so I've talked to Adam Simon about how we were going to approach this, and he believes the first step is a meeting. So I'll stick with his plan, and we'll see what additional information comes forward from that. And that will obviously be shared.
Thinking, period.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I will stick with the plan that I developed with Adam Simon, which is that we will endeavor to arrange a meeting, and we will share the results of that meeting. So...
Thank you.
One final comment?
Please.
If we are tying a certain design to naming rights, I am going to respectfully request that we ask for a permanent access easement across 261, not only for during the construction phase, but in perpetuity for our patrons because the original desire was to have a united beach. And so at least having the easement across would be quite a gift to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Root. Item number seven on the agenda, staff reports. JP?
Yep. I am thrilled, absolutely thrilled, to introduce Alisa Kepstenski. She is our new Director of Recreation and Facilities, and she's gone through a process to get to this phase of now being part of the team, and it's been awesome. She's stayed here since arriving on Wednesday, or Tuesday, so it's been a quick run. But do you want to provide some details as to who you are and the unbelievable experience that you have and that you now can invest in Oneeka Park District?
Well, thank you for having me. I'm excited to be part of Oneeka Park District, and I'm really excited to be working alongside you guys. My name is Alisa Kepstenski. I come from... I live in Palatine. But I have 25 years of experience in the fields of parks and recreation, graduating from University of Illinois with a degree in recreation, and got my master's from National Lewis University. So over the 25 years, I have worked at Arlington Heights Park District and Hoffman Estates Park District, most recently as their Director of Recreation at Hoffman Estates Park District. So I was the director there for the past five years, and I just started yesterday. So I am very, very excited to meet all of you and work closely with the team here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
John, anything else?
John, you have any staff reports?
Yep.
Nothing to do.
Costa, anything else you want to add?
We're striving with construction. I'd like to report that the work for the golf course has been completed. So seated down and everything else, Undergardner and I had an opportunity yesterday to basically walk the entire regional course or populate the council's items for that and continue working with the village. I would expect that we'll probably see close-up documents within the next month, get that wrapped up, and then file a payment accordingly. We are going to start moving into Phase Two of that construction regardless of Centennial. As regards to Crow Island, we are going to be working with the village and the Crow Island School District, School District 36 on that project and collaborating in tremendous fashion as we always do. So that's something on the front burner that's moving forward, and staff will take the information from tonight. We'll start in with our representatives for our design team for Elder Centennial and start getting permits wrapped, you know, getting set to be reviewed by the park board and look to bring together a final plan with our underings on the 19th.
Terrific. Thank you. Kate, you want to provide something?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking all of the commissioners for really kind of participating lately in some of the fun events that we've been having. We really have definitely kind of celebrate and, I think, define what the community of Oneeka is all about. And in keeping with that, we'll be celebrating the reopening of Nick Corwin Park Playground on Thursday, October 12th. We'll be having a celebration event at the playground, which will be held from 2:00 to 4:00 and is free to the community. So Nick Corwin Park is a significant green space and playground for this community, and it's always really been a special park. And now we've enhanced the playground's footprint, and the playground equipment was replaced to meet current safety and ADA standards and guidelines. And I'd love to encourage everyone to attend, the entire community to attend. Check out the new equipment, which is a nature theme, and it's just really pretty as well as being really modernized. Shaded canopies and an adaptive swing and the reconfigured sand cove is just really kind of enticing, I think, for all the kids in the neighborhood and the community at large. And this revitalization project would not only benefits our community, but it really reaches across the globe, which Oneeka resident and Troop 18 Eagle Scout Jake Claybrook championed the cause, and he dismantled and packed and shipped and reconstructed the previous playground equipment for an after-school enrichment program in Ghana, West Africa. And it was with Commissioner James, along with a previous commissioner, Teresa Claybrook. They collaborated and assisted with the cause in Ghana along with Jake, which was really great to kind of see everyone kind of working together in that capacity. So the grand reopening on Thursday, October 12th really represents kind of what Oneeka Park District's commitment is in providing safe and engaging recreational spaces for the entire community. So I hope everyone can join us in the celebration.
You're holding back. Free ice cream.
Oh, and of course, the free ice cream is also an enticement. So looking forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you for the update, Kate.
Yeah.
We look forward to being there on the 12th.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional staff reports?
I have two quick things.
Denise, thank you.
The meeting minutes from the last meeting, the September 21st meeting, are in the folder for you to review. They'll be presented at the next meeting. Also, I have presented to you each today a draft copy of the meeting schedule for next year. You'll see at the bottom in pink. I kind of highlighted some dates. Worked the schedule. Those are holidays and spring break vacations. But if anybody sees anything that I could have missed, please let us know because this will be available for you to vote on at the next meeting. That's all three.
I have one calendar item. I'm not a staff, but I do have one calendar item. The executive director search. Our Gov HR representatives will be preparing a written report of the filtered group of candidates for October 17th. That will be a confidential report summarizing each candidate that they have decided to interview, confidential to us as commissioners. On the 19th, we will go into closed. The representatives from Gov HR will give a five-minute review of each of this semifinalist list of candidates. So the closed session for October 18th will contain that summary. During that meeting, we will vote on those, that semifinalist and take them to a finalist. We all know that November 10th, we'll have a full day of interviewing, and that November 11th will have a board meeting that will be closed to make the final selection. All of these events are all board events. And I realize this timing is challenging, and I realize that this is a big task, but I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of those items and dates.
Nice question. As I understand the Epley Institute study, when is that going? I thought it takes them a week to process, so are we going to have the benefit of Epley's input?
So Epley will provide its overview and results from the day of their institute, not in a formal written format. That written format takes place about seven to 10 days after the completion of the entire process. It's almost like a final summary of everything that they've done. But you'll get their insights at the close of the November 10th institute. They are here, and they're going to provide every detail at that point.
Yeah. Epley will be on site all day on the 10th.
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah.
Appreciate you. Will they start the on-site on the 10th or the 11th, or are we done with them on the 19th?
I'm not so sure what their role would be unless it would be to answer questions about the same people that another entity, Epley, is conducting in greater depth. So I think that Gov HR's work rationally finishes when they hand, when we hand over to Epley the shorter list of candidates on October 19th. That's not to say you could get, as you circle back to those candidates, you could get people say no. You could get people, you could have ties. You might need Gov HR to go back and clarify. So they'll still be in the loop, but I don't see them having an additional evaluative role on that Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then for Epley, will they be providing a pre-version of their assessments? Because it sounded like there was a menu of choices in terms of what their assessment looked like.
Right, right.
So are they...
So their assessment process is pretty public. They've conducted it throughout a number of park districts. There's usually a digital resume. There's an inbox study. We don't know exactly, and each of these is day of that the candidates will be required to produce. So we won't know exactly what the nature of the inbox study is. Something will show up in your inbox, and in the real-time Friday exercise, you'll, as a candidate, you would be required to respond to that and draft some type of communications regarding that inbox exercise. You would also be required to draft and produce a digital resume at the very beginning of your exercise. So those will be real-time exercises conducted by Epley during the process. But I don't know specifically what the inbox study will be.
Okay, so we're following their standard.
Yes.
Protocol. Like, we customized it in any way for us?
They, we have had, Eric and I had extensive conversations with them about, and we have all contributed our surveys.
So are they taking all the input that we gave to Gov HR?
Yes. Yes.
In terms of our criteria, in terms of the staff feedback?
Yes. Yes. All of it is shared across both firms.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then when people are doing the assessment, like one person will be doing the assessment, one person will be meeting with staff, one person will be meeting, and they'll rotate? Is that the...
Yeah. It's sort of like a round robin. And Monday is a holiday because it's Veterans Day, so a lot of people will be out of the office, so they'll be using our office to conduct those round robin interviews.
Actually, it's Friday, the 10th.
Friday, the tail.
Not a holiday for us. So we'll have dedicated room for everything to take place.
Thank you.
But Saturday, we're off.
Yeah, Saturday, you're off. There you go. Saturday, we'll adjust the board.
Yeah.
And that will be the special meeting?
Correct.
We'll post it. Make sure that it's properly posted. That's a special meeting, but essentially it opens up into open session and immediately goes into closed session.
Any other questions?
Any other staff reports?
Yep. If I can jump in and kind of...
Better than director?
Yeah, run both. From a staff report perspective, I first want to thank Toby Ross, who has altered his schedule to run the entire play for video and everything that you see on the screen. So first of all, Toby, thank you for being here. I know it takes away time at home with the family, but it's also a great thing that you're here because you can offer insight into Fall Fest and Bike Oneeka. Both fantastic events. I know Cynthia, you were there, but share with the group all the...
Yeah, I mean, you're putting me on the spot and telling me I was going to be speaking. But yeah, no, I think Fall Fest, Bike Oneeka, again, you know, large success. be speaking, but yeah, no, I think Fall Fest, Bike Weneka, again, you know, large successes for the community. I would put our participation very similarly to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, you know, if not better. Great, I mean, just weather was perfect. I mean, I can't really say anything bad. It was, I would say, people didn't buy as much alcohol as usual. That's about the, that was probably the one negative. We didn't make as much in terms of our sales, but other than that, you know, participation was, was there. Bike Weneka was great, you know, it's always, it's always a nice day. You know, get all the staff out and, you know, have a nice showing, so.
Well, you are underestimating or underspeaking to all the planning that you put forward and James Duneski put forward for Bike Weneka first. Secondly, you evolved it to the baseball fields.
We did.
And I think it created more room for everybody, which was awesome. And notably, Costa and the staff with all the prep work and the teardown work after the event, that was amazing as well, so.
All the staff, yeah.
A lot of, a lot of hands jumping in. You do have the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven Weneka Park District sponsored strategic plan communication. Taylor Brooks, who's not with us tonight, and she put this all together in collaboration with Kyle Berg, and it's a fantastic document. We're trying to reduce the size of the font even further so nobody can actually read. But Christina Cotto offered some great insight. We're going to change the way in which these results are provided. We'll come back with another version so that it's easier to read. And that is it for, so the caucus survey, the platforms, I know, I don't want to jump in front of the caucus liaison, Commissioner Rapp, but, you know, plank number one is drafted as the waterfront improvements, which has a meaningful support of eighty-three percent of the respondents requesting that the park district move forward, but also some consensus building required where fewer than forty percent are asking for some additional consideration for the amenities, scale, scope, and cost. So I think that the overriding percentages, you know, certainly speak to moving forward, and I think the work that the board has done, and with third-party service providers and Costa at the kind of point, there have been quite a number of considerations for amenities, scale, scope, and cost. So that's our first plank. Public-private partnerships is the second proposed plank, and the third proposed plank is around green space and where the park district can or cannot move, or what the community would like to see in that, in that area. And I think, Commissioner Rapp, unless I misunderstand, that there's still some work to be done to finalize this information, and then it's presented in its final form, if I understand the process.
You might, you might know more than I do.
Okay.
The town hall is November sixth.
Right.
It is unclear at this point if it will be virtual or in person unless you, either you or Christina have heard something, but I'm not.
No.
I did cut the question out there, and also, we are all eagerly awaiting the actual survey results, which will come on their own schedule.
Thanks, John. Concluding the manager director, board liaison reports. Any tonight? Then we'll move to item ten, closed session. So may I have a motion to go to closed session pursuant to five ILCS one twenty, section two, seat one, for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body? Five ILCS one twenty, section two, seat five, for purchase or lease of property? Five ILCS one twenty-two-six-two, seat six, concerning the price for sale or lease of property? And five ILCS one twenty-two, seat eleven, for litigation or an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body that's been filed, is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Hemmings?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Rapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lessing?
Yes.
Commissioner Cotto?
Yes.
That motion passes?
Thank you, Denise. We're at eight oh eight. I would ask commissioners to be back in five minutes to begin closed session. Thank you to all who attended.
Nothing pending after closed session.
Correct.